...interepublic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Members present this evening are Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Dawn, Mrs. Alvin, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Kupchak, Mr. Weber, and Mrs. Iacona. Mrs. Brand and Ms. Johnson are both are away on vacation and I hope enjoying the sun someplace. And our next item of business is approval of minutes. I have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the education meeting of June 9, 2009, and the special meeting of June 15, 2009, and the business meeting of June 16, 2009. Enclosures 1 through 3 moved by. Mrs. Kupchak segmented by Mr. Iacona. Any comments on the minutes, Mrs. Dawn?
Yes, I just want to bring everybody's attention to enclosure number 3, which is revised.
Correct, thank you. Further questions or comments on the minutes, Mrs. Kupchak?
The minutes from June 16. There's no page numbers, but try them one. It's the back of the second page. The second paragraph, Mrs. Alvin stated she anticipates committed work on the spread of her summer work. We'll look at the next phase in August. If I remember correctly, we talked about the board reviewing the plans over the summer and then to come back to this board and give feedback to the committee on which what plan they liked, what plans they wanted them tweaked. Because if that's what, and we didn't say we would do any more work, we did the work. We just need feedback on what the board likes or doesn't like. So I wanted to amend that to read Board of Education review plans and come back and give direction to the committee.
I don't recall the, I just don't recall the comments that evening. Do other board members recall that? Mr. Matola?
I don't recall the comments, but I think what Mrs. Kupchak's saying, just the bit is correct. We were going to be over the summer.
She said I don't want to give people the wrong impression. We came to give a presentation on the work we did and get feedback from the full board. Committee did the work, we just need feedback from the full board on what they want to do. So I know, I'm just trying to clarify because people do tend to look at these minutes and say, well, you know, are you doing more work? And obviously, the committee can't report without direction from the full board.
Mrs. Dawn?
I disagree. I think the conversation was, because we had so many questions when it was presented that the committee was still going to do some more work, and I believe we had a conversation about it back to us in October or September.
Right, but we did the work, there's nothing to get back to. I mean, if you remember Mr. even Matola making a joke saying he used a summer reading on the beach and then come back. We did the three plans and feeder plan, but this point, it would just be spinning our wheels. We need direction on what the board likes best.
Well, I think.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yeah, I think then, I mean, for these minutes, we can state now that the committee has finished their work, because I don't remember that going that way.
Well, not so much finished, just to the point where we need.
But now you need more.
I mean, we could come up with ten other plans, but if we don't have direction, like for instance, for example, you say, I like plan whatever, eight, nine, whatever they are, but I think I'd like to see this scenario changed in this plan. Or just based on the conversation that evening, you know, people saying they might want to see additions at some elementary schools prior to meeting. So I just was, wanted to make sure, just for the public's sake, because, you know, people do read these.
Yeah, I just don't remember it that way.
Just want to clarify, you know, for the public.
May I suggest that we could ask Mrs. Dyer to review the tape? We are, this meeting is taped, and I mean, I believe she took this from the tape, and I.
That's fine, too. I'm just saying, I know that our committee doesn't have, can't do anything without some feedback from, and I know I said that. I'm not sure how it translates, but.
I thought also, you know, perhaps, there were some discussions reflected in the minutes that Mr. Boyle was going to look at some of the feeder patterns for the middle schools and that. Once we had some of that information reviewed, maybe that's what we're first.
I don't know, because I thought we pretty much every single feeder pattern could possibly.
Mrs. Iacona, maybe you can provide.
That, that, right, that's what I remember coming out of it, was that Central Administration will work on a feeder pattern and, you know, that you would come back. And I actually kind of remember after the joke about the summer reading, that maybe you would have one summer meeting. I do remember something to that effect. It wasn't indefinite, but there was a maybe thrown in there.
I don't think they were held to it.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a possibility.
I think it was available for them to do, and I don't know that that's been the case.
I can affirm that I would love for there to be some kind of meeting about the middle school thing, so that, because I believe we were going to discuss that in August or September.
I also believe that we did at that meeting discuss, and I will ask Mr. Boyle to confirm, that we had, at that particular meeting, reviewing the K5 piece of this, it was becoming clear that the board, the board was seeing the need to look at the secondary piece. And that's when we asked Mr. Boyle to look at all of that. And from that, work would be ready for the committee, and I don't know that that work is yet done.
Maybe during open, yeah, maybe during open more discussion, we could talk more about what we would want for the.
We could, right now, we're talking about the minutes and I might get too off point.
My understanding that we were to come back to the board in August or September with a suggested feeder pattern and were to include a projection for the school year 2011, 2012, and that work has not been completed and probably won't be completed until the end of August. It's the projections that, you know, we have to work through, because we're doing projections ourselves and are not contracting. In the interest of saving dollars, we're doing the projections ourselves, since it's time consuming, number one, but more importantly, we want to get it right, so.
Okay, thank you. Does that help, Mrs. Kupchak?
Yes, I just, and I think we can talk more about it during the board discussion, because I'm not sure which feeder you're doing the work on. The feeder plans that we presented from our committee, pretty much every scenario in the book. So that would be a lot of data. However, I just wanted to point it out because of questions people are saying, well, I read the minutes and, you know, are you guys voting on a plan? And I'm like, well, we didn't, I can get any feedback from anybody on the board about our work.
Mr. Boyle, do you have more to add and then?
I was just going to add to the feeder pattern, it was not our intent to do projections in each one of those feeder pattern, but actually, for the administration to pull together, as a central office administration, look at a recommendation or possibly two recommendations for a feeder pattern, do projections on that, considering all aspects, the size of buildings, appropriate balance.
Just general.
Yes, so that we come back, probably with one suggested feeder, modified feeder pattern. One of the issues that we're really looking at is the size of the Fairfield Woods addition, because that will be telling in terms of the way we do the feeder. That's why sooner may not be our, I mean, we will make the recommendation based on an 840 pupil Fairfield Woods Mills.
So I guess then, just basically, can we amend it?
Or we can leave it as is, and the minutes of this particular meeting will clarify that, because this discussion will be recorded and the open board discussion later that will speak to the point will be recorded.
Sounds good then.
Okay, so if there are no other changes with the minutes, are members prepared to vote on accepting the minutes? All in favor? I believe that's unanimous for you, or yes, Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Unanimous by the members present. And before we move on, I would like to welcome Mr. Sam Cottler from Fairfield Ludlow High School, who is going to be doing some of our videotaping for our meetings, and perhaps he will have some assistance from another student later on in the year, but welcome and thank you very much. And please know that any night that these meetings go too long, and you have to go home, finish homework, study for a test, or simply sleep, you are free to go. And so, thank you very much. And moving on to old business, we have approval of policy, recommended motion that the Board of Education approved policy 5144.1, seclusion and restraint in the Fairfield Public Schools as presented to the Board at the June 16, 2009 meeting, and as amended, it's enclosure number four, and I will turn that over to the Policy Committee if there's anything further to add.
Can that be called a comment on that?
All voting items have public comment at the time that we take the vote. And Mr. Boyle, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is some of the definitions, we were requested to include some of the definitions, and I think as Ms. Leonardo said last month, that we'll include those in the administrative regulations, specifically persons at risk is asked to be defined.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for members of the board who did have this at our last meeting, Mr. Weber?
This policy applies only to persons defined as persons at risk, and that's exclusively, includes exclusively individuals with disabilities.
Yeah, includes individuals with disabilities or those awaiting an IEP?
Okay, you know, it's, it's just not clear from the title, and it's not applicable throughout the district to children who are not so defined, so that someone's looking through it. I don't look at policies, and you know, when I first came on the board and tried to understand them, it's always like a good thought to clarify as much as possible.
Would it be helpful to amend the policy in terms of the title, seclusion and restraint of Fairfield Public Schools?
Seclusion and restraint for persons at risk as defined by state law in the Fairfield Public Schools. Yeah, just persons at risk.
Is that really necessary?
Oh, I think it does add clarity so that there's no confusion.
Yeah.
I mean, is it necessary?
Well, it's not necessary, you know, well, you scratch your head, I think, and say that's a policy, but this only applies to children in the district who are defined as persons at risk. So right there, you know, someone could use a policy manual, might just think this applies to, you know, all children in school districts, and that, that's wrong. You know, I think it's clear that this policy specifically addresses just one segment of our student population, whereas most of the policy does just the obvious, that any child in the system that applies to discrimination, you know, whatever, this is a specific, addresses only a specific segment of the population. So I think it's only, adds clarity to it for future reference, if you look at the policies or individuals who might have issues with the restraint and want to know what it is and so forth and so on. So that's, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Weber, would you like to offer that amendment?
Yes, Mr. Boyle's language, seclusion and restraint of persons at risk.
Of persons with disabilities who are persons at risk, is we use.
Okay.
Can you restate, restate that again, Mr. Weber, or me, Mr. Boyle?
The amendment would include changing the title of the policy to seclusion and restraint of persons with disabilities who are persons at risk as defined by state law in the Fairfield Public Schools.
If I could continue, do we have a separate policy on?
Do we have a second to that amendment segmented by Mr. Matola? And now it's open for discussion, the amendment? We'll have to discuss the amendment and then vote on the amendment before the main item.
I support it.
Are there other members of the board who want to address the amendment and the amendment only at this time? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who want to address the amendment and the amendment only at this time? Which is, and I would ask you again, Mr. Boyle, if you could read the title?
Seclusion and restraint of persons with disabilities who are persons at risk, quotes, as defined by state law in the Fairfield Public Schools.
Okay, are there any members of the public who want to address the amendment? Just the amendment, the title, just the title. Seeing none, is the board prepared to vote on the amendment? All in favor? I see five in favor and opposed, two. Voting in favor are Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Alvin, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Kupchak, Mr. Weber, and in opposition, Mrs. Iacona and Mrs. Dawn. We are moved back to the main motion on the policy. Is there further discussion from the board on the policy? Mr. Weber, did you have more comments on the policy other than the?
No, I don't. I can ask Mr. Boyle certain questions, that would be.
Okay, are there any other comments on the policy from members of the board? Seeing none, before the board votes, are there any members of the public that would like to address the motion, which is approval of policy 5144.1? If so, please come to the microphone stating your name and address for the record.
Mark Newman, 109 Woodside Circle. I want to thank the board for looking into this, but there are, the policy really incomplete, and it's sending us up a lot more problems. As you know, first of all, 95% of the kids in the country get restrained or secluded as special ed kids. In the last decade, kids that were secluded and restrained, there were hundreds of cases where kids have died, and of that, 50% of them were with staff members that were trained. So to put a policy in there without doing the follow-up, what is the training of the baby? How are we going to make sure that the staff is trained? And do we have enough training in the schools? Three members in a school is not enough to be restrained, because basically, in most cases, we need two or three adults to restrain a child. So to only have three in a school would send us up what severe liability it's a school district, injury to children, and everything of that nature. I think the things that have to be discussed is how are we going to train our staff? And two, what type of behavior staff are we going to have at our schools? We do not have any behavior, anyone who does behavior, support staff in the school itself. We outsource that, there are people that are called as needed basis. If you're going to be doing this type of policy, you need to have behavioral support in the school. Right now, this policy is really just a Band-Aid, and it's sending us up, the administration up, the school district up, with additional liability. You're going to get situations where someone touches a kid who is not trained, that's a liability issue, because your policy is going to be incomplete. So really, you look at the overall thing rather than the policy itself, because, you know, you won't, don't want to put a Band-Aid on this situation. Thank you very much.
Are there other members of the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I'll come back to the board, Mrs. Dawn.
Thank you. Actually, at our Policy Committee, we had long discussions about training of staff. That was going to be part of the administrative regulations. We did have, our policy meetings are always open to the public, we did have members of the public specifically sit in and help us with this policy, so I'm comfortable with the way it is.
Mr. Boyle?
It was also generated through discussions with the council.
And Mr. Weber?
I said, you know, the first sentence says, as set forth in administrative regulations, that there are going to be administrative regulations, that I would think would be, would specifically discuss training of personnel. I mean, we're doing this because it's, well, for a number of reasons, but primarily because it's a new state law. And so, I mean, you know, I wouldn't, that was the purpose of this, it sort of starts the ball rolling, which I think is admirable, and that in the future, hopefully, you know, the soon to be future, we'll have those administrative regulations that will address, and that was my understanding from the Policy Committee. Correct after your question. Thank you.
Mrs. Iacona, and then Mrs. Kupchak.
When do you anticipate then having them administrative regs behind it?
Mr. Boyle?
We're working on it now, and we expect to have them by the first of the year, the first of the school year.
So is it possible to wait then to approve this? I mean, is there something that, statewide, do we need to get this done? Can we just wait to get the administrative regs?
Secularly, I mean, you meet the policy in order to get in there.
In order to do the regs.
Right. I mean, the regs are actually our administrative margin orders to implement the board policy, and they're much more comprehensive than the policy statement.
All right, so if we approve this, if this is approved tonight, then you'll get the regs done by the first of, of September, or for the first of the school day?
First of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. I, Mrs. Kupchak?
I'm just going to ask the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, is the board prepared to vote on the policy? All in favor? The item passes unanimously with members present. Moving on, we have item B, we have approval of policy, recommend, I have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approved policy 5519, which is wellness, as presented to the Board on June 16, 2009, at that meeting, and as amended, it is enclosure number four, uh, five. Can I again go back to the Policy Committee if you have more updates? Mrs. Dawn?
Yes, actually, the Wellness Committee did meet with members of the public who were concerned about our policy. We had a meeting solely for them in July. It was interesting, and we, I mean, we, I think we came to an understanding with these members, and we've, we've discussed coalitions versus committees and groups, so I think we're on the same page now. So that is enclosed. We did leave out the communication part in the last policy, it is updated here, so I think we're good to go on this.
Mr. Boyle?
We also had a question from a board member as to whether this will put us in good stead with the state in terms of SA reviewing our policies. They had reviewed the policy once in all the districts in the state, and we expect that they will review the revisions again, but that won't be done based on the number of people they have as reviewers for at least a year, but from our perspective, we're comfortable that we met all the, the language that was necessary in terms of the overall first review and assessment.
Thank you. Mrs. Dawn?
Yes, thank you. I mean, we got the part that also the administrative regulations are going to play a large part in this policy as well.
Bring the questions or comments, Mr. Weber?
There was a lot of discussion with the Policy Committee about district-wide wellness coalition. I think Mr. Boyle could just summarize.
Well, actually, it'd be better for Dr. Clark to summarize, because her, one of her pet projects is very close to the district wellness.
Is Lady Zane, it's going to lead the charge in terms of implementation of policy?
There are two, there are actually, and I'm sure this was part of the discussion, I meet monthly with representatives from different schools, and we also have Sarah Levy from the Town Health Department, Mrs. Sitzpatrick, who's here tonight, from our Food Services, Mr. Abraham from the Physical Education, and Ray and Ryan from Health.
And they were all there at the Policy Committee.
Right, and we're very active and very interested in the entire aspect of wellness. PTA Council has a liaison member on that community. PTA Council also has another group who are interested primarily in nutrition, and they are also very active. So I think people will be taking a look at this, and the Wellness Coalition will definitely make sure that the schools are on track.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dawn?
I think that was part of the problem. I think that was where we needed clarification, was we were looking for representation to make sure that it was on your monthly meeting with all the curriculum leaders as well, to make sure that, and I guess, just so, once the administrative regulations come out and everybody's on board, I think we just wanted to update for the, you know, just a superintendent's update for the first few meetings, make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item and this item only? If so, please come to the microphone stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Michelle McKay, my address is 106 Merritt Street, and it was for our benefit that the special meeting was coming, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you. I know it's hard, especially in the summer and with everything else going on, how appreciative you were and are to have been able to have that opportunity, and I think the policy was very strong. And we had actually conversations with one of the, the members of the Rudd Center who was willing to even look at it if we were interested, and it was just a great meeting, and I'm just here to say thank you very much. We're very excited for the fall and working with the Wellness Coalition, and we've seen great things happen, so thank you very much.
Good evening, Charlotte Westy, 160 Hunter Road. On behalf of PTA Council, I want to thank you all. Michelle is our chairwoman of the Field for Learning partnership. I spoke with Lisa Parvita, so we're really delighted to be working with you guys on this project, so we're looking forward to doing our partnership.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, before we vote, I'll come back to the board. Any further comments? The only comment I would have is to say it's very nice to be doing work up here and have the public come up and thank us. I know they do thank us, but it is not often that we're working on.
It's the summer.
I like policy that they come up and thank us, so thank you very much, and thank you for your help.
Well, Mrs. McKay, you come up every meeting if you see something.
We would enjoy that. And to all members of the board in favor of approving this policy, sign the signs, but I see unanimous of the board members present. Thank you very much. Moving on, we move on to new business, and we have discussion of the ARA funds, and I will turn that over to Dr. Clark.
I was going to ask Mrs. Kupchak to tie over there and walk you through where we are to date. The Board Subcommittee on Finance, Personnel, and Community Relations had quite a lengthy discussion about this at the last meeting, and it was their feeling that because the ICPA funds are basically part of the grant, we'd like to be informed that we're continuing the work of the grant. The ARA stimulus funds are funding categories that are new in the board, those should be much better informed about that. If Mrs. Kupchak and Lenny would like to take a few minutes, and Mrs. Iacona would like to add to the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I'm just going to briefly walk you through the two sides of this document that was just handed out to you, starting with the short side, if you will. Although we use the acronym ARA quite frequently and flexibly, there are actually two categories that we qualify for, and we made that clear to you. We call one the SFSF, if you will, and that stands for State Fiscal Stabilization Funds. We are receiving of those funds the amount of $502,601. Those funds in particular are being focused on reinstatement of budget line items that were cut throughout the budget process. You'll see some of those items there related to paraprofessionals, teachers, beginning teacher training, and Mrs. Iacona, I'm sure will go into more specifics as to the teacher training, and Mrs. Iacono, I'm sure will go into more specifics as to the technology and maintenance pieces there on that, that side of the line. If you'll flip the page over, under the ARA category as well, we qualify for IDA funds in the amount of $2,349,133. A portion of that is committed to non-public in the amount of $105,110. Key criteria that we used when developing this list, number one was sustainability. We need to be careful that we're not creating, taking part in or committing into things that may commit us further in the future to large budget items. Therefore, we stay away from things like personnel. We focused on continuing to improve the key areas of curriculum instruction and assessment. Therefore, you're, therefore, you'll see on the list, a lot of focus on common form of assessments, reading, mathematics, professional development, work with parents, technology as far as access to curriculum by students with special needs, training for modifications and accommodations for students to access curriculum instructional programs. You'll see all of this, bottom line focuses on building the capacity, focuses on building the capacity... I can't pass mine out to the public, I'm sorry. So in essence, the IDA ARA funds focus on building the capacity of all teachers to benefit all students throughout the school system, not committing us to any big future budget items. All of these funds need to be expended by June 30th of 2011. So we have these funds to expend over a two-year period. And that's primarily the big overview of the ARA funds.
Mrs. Iacono, would you mind blocking this moving, SFSF funds, because that was quite a lengthy discussion at the meeting we had.
It was, thank you very much. We, we did meet, we did discuss about, discuss this particular issue in length, and heard a great deal of public comment about these funds, and overwhelmingly, we heard that the community wanted it to go back into the classroom directly for staff cuts. So, one of the things that was recommended by administration was to use the $65,000 to restore two pairs for in-school suspension. Unfortunately, we thought this was going to be set aside by the state, but because they didn't act on it, it automatically became law. So we have to fund this, and we're recommending that we use the money from the SFSF to do that. Probably the, I'll skip down to the beginning teacher training, because again, this is something that the state said that they were gonna commit funds to, and then ended up, as they so often do, not funding it. So, this is something that we really need to do for our beginning teachers. We're not gonna get state funding for it, so it's our recommendation that we use $25,000 so that they're able to get training on their first years of teaching. And the biggest piece of this came around restoring the, really, the five FTE equivalent that the board cut in, in June. And it was our recommendation that we use the, some of the funds from this to restore the 2.2 teachers that were cut as a result of our budgeting process. And when I say 2.2, it was because the guidelines are gonna be, see this for fourth and fifth grade, and as we sold McKinley and Burrow, we're each gonna see an increase of, I think, 26, 26, 26, and I don't know if the freshman and the round McKinley numbers, they, they were all up by one as well. Subsequent to that, and I should add that with that one full-time teacher, you would then need a .1 for world language, so that's where you hit the 2.2. Subsequent to that, we found out that Burrow's now below guidelines, so we're down to 1.1 as the recommendation currently for classroom and world language teachers. There was mention made of putting additional funds in the technology and maintenance budget, but it was our recommendation that we hold off on that and do that after the start of the school year, and instead, hold on to this money, because we don't need to spend it immediately, and should there, should there be any other classes that go over guidelines, we can then use this money to add staff as we need it. And then, if we don't go up, and we don't have any increase in, in staffing, so we can look to putting into the technology and maintenance budget. And then it was the recommendation of administration that, due to feedback that they had gotten from the high school and middle school principals, that we restored five of the 10 days for the 10 and a half month staff. And this is something that was acceptable to us, and they were, had agreed to work out whether or not they would do three days before school, and two days at the end of the year, or vice versa. They would, they would work in conjunction to figure out what was best for students. So it's our recommendation that we adopt this as a board tonight, and I hope they will accept our recommendation. And again, we've really gotten a big push from the community that this is something that they'd like to see happen, and I feel pretty strongly about it myself, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Iacono covered that very well from that meeting. This is a discussion item, and I would ask, Dr. Clark, is it necessary that we approve this with action this evening for you to apply for the application?
We do not need to have board approval, and so we didn't put it on as a voting item. It would make it stronger if you were willing to add it as a voting item, and it would enable us, if whether or not we have a statement from your vote from you to support this, we would then be able to contact administrators tomorrow, have them contact the 10 and a half month people, and figure out whether they're coming in three days or four days before school starts. So it would really help us if you would take the action that you need to be involved in.
Would you want the board to do that with, there are a lot of initials going around, the SFSF fund as well as the ARA on the front, or just the one on the back?
Yes.
Okay, so if the board is so inclined to act upon this, I would need a motion, a second, and a two-thirds vote to add this as a voting item this evening? Mrs. Dawn? Yes?
I would prefer, if we don't need a vote, to just do a sense of the body, if that would still work.
Are board members comfortable in the sense of the body to give the superintendent direction? Then that is fine. So I will just go around the table with a sense of the body. Question from Mrs. Dawn?
No.
I'm sorry. I have a question first. My only concern is the line item regarding the 10 and a half month certified staff. Question as to why administration then only wants to put back five of the 10 days. My thought would be restore the full 10 days and make them 10 and a half again instead of 10 and a quarter, because obviously, if we had them for 10 days, they were needed and necessary. So what was the thought behind only giving a partial time back? We have the money, I feel, we should, you know, put them back to their full...
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
In pooling the, the administrators, I mean, honestly, everybody's aware of the fiscal crisis that the district is, is, has been in, is in, and perhaps will be in. So the feeling of the administration was, well, this coming school year, five days would be adequate, and it would give everyone an opportunity to really determine whether or not five days was enough, not, and then really take a look at the, the positions within that group, because there are multiple positions within that 10 and a half month group, to, to make a recommendation to the, the board, perhaps even during budget for the '010, '11 school year moving forward.
Ms. Dow? Just me and what you're saying, recommendation that some of these jobs then might really only require being a 10 and a quarter from here on in, like you're, you're, they're judging that, so that they, not just because of this one year, but you're saying that some might be deemed to be 10 and a quarter instead of 10 and a half? If I'm hearing correctly, I just wanna make sure, understand me correctly.
Okay. And Mr. Boyle, do you wanna add?
Well, I think, I was not, I guess, so, I'm just gonna play my, put my principal hat on for a minute. Think what happened when these positions were cut, the impact that it has on the secondary schools primarily, for counselors, deans, is tremendous. So we heard an outcry for, a cry for help from the secondary administrators, that at the very least, could we try somehow to restore, you know, five days for next, the next school year? We'll make some determination, three days intended before school, two days after, at the end of the school year, to see if we could do that the next year. Fortunately, the stabilization funds came through, so gave us that as an opportunity. I think it will provide us with the opportunity to evaluate this as we go into the next budget cycle, to see if the five days, or that is, the three days ahead of time worked, and if it's something we wish to continue, then we could talk about that. If we still felt as though we needed the 10 days, and in, in those situations, the counselors are putting schedules together, working with students at the beginning of the school year, some of the training that the deans do with, with student populations before school starts was seen as critical to the secondary. So that's kind of where we're at. The 10 and a half month versus 10, the five days versus 10 days was more or less a compromise, even before the state fiscal, the stabilization funds came through. So that's kind of what we went with, and would appreciate the opportunity to evaluate that before we go into the next budget cycle, to see where it goes.
In addition, there may, excuse me, may be some positions where the administrators say, these people really need 10 days, these need seven, these need five, these need four.
Also, if I'm remembering correctly, there were a group of, I think most of them, guidance counselors that were kind of grandfathered under some different, so that they, they would be still serving the 10 and a half, and...
There were guidance counselors, school psychologists, that were grandfathered because they had a, an early start.
Okay, so they're still set at the 10 and a half, they're not being touched, and this would be then for the ones that were not...
Uh, Mr. Matola, and then Mr. Webber?
Yeah, I would support this, and it looks like the intent is if we have to, we can hire more teachers if our classes, if we have an increase. How, how are we doing with respect, with respect to the enrollment? Are we pretty much where we thought we would be from last June when we got our figures?
Well, the, the enrollment really moves in the summer up and down, so it's hard to make a determination. I know Mrs. Kaita Leonard today met with the elementary principals together with Mrs. Fitzgerald, myself, Dr. Rosado, to actually take a look at staffing at the elementary level, see the ups and downs, and maybe you could summarize where we're at?
Sure, if you were to take a look at the budget book from earlier in the year, you'd note that we were anticipating 234 sections being down seven teachers at the elementary level. As of to yesterday, we are anticipating 236 sections, down six classroom teachers compared to the '08-'09 school year. So we are monitoring, I'm regular, daily email with principals. Really, we anticipate a little bit more of a flow toward the end of August of families coming back and saying, oh, oh, it's time to register for school, particularly in a couple more schools other than, compared to others. So at this time, we're closely monitoring it. We're about in the ballpark that we're anticipating, but it's a day-by-day communication.
Further questions?
Mr. Boyle, one more.
Uh, Mr. Boyle?
The elementary principals actually are holding off their notification letters for students until September 7th, oh, August. We're holding off, but we're holding off and not quite that long. August 17th is the Monday, because what we want to do is we want to really take a closer look, because there are so many sections that are close to collapsing, some sections close to adding. We also are holding two positions vacant right now, just in case we have to collapse sections, because we don't want to get ourselves in a situation of having more teachers than we need on staff. So we're holding two positions. The, there are four elementary principals that are interviewing a pool of candidates. Once that pool of candidates has been interviewed, we will have two or three teachers in the queue, so that we know these are the teachers we would hire on August 17th. That will be our drop-dead final date. Once we determine those are the sections that we have, we'll go forward. Letters will be sent out notifying parents of their child's class placement. All 11 elementary schools will send those letters out the same day, so that there's no comparison, I got the letter, you didn't, and we know what that's like, and it'll... I think the meeting this morning was very fruitful, and people were, really embraced the idea.
Thank you. Are members through a sense of the body comfortable with the administration moving forward with the items on this list? I'll go around, I see the nods of the head from everybody. Dr. Clark, you have a sense of the body to move forward with this?
Thank you. We appreciate that, and also the work of the Finance Committee was really helpful.
Uh, Mrs. Iacono?
I, I just wanted to add for purposes of being on the record, one of the things that we did talk about in Subcommittee was applying for this money and getting it and budgeting for it, because that was a concern of ours, and it was, well, Dr. Clark, if you could just speak to that a little bit, because you have applied and...
Absolutely, and Mrs. Kaita Leonard and Mrs. Martin are in daily contact with the State Department of Education in terms of are there new forms we need to submit, are there things that we need to do, and we're right on target. This is so important that we're really staying on top of this.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, we have salary adjustment for non-bargaining unit employees, and I have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve a salary adjustment for non-bargaining unit employees. I will need someone to move that motion, and I will need to insert the percentage increase into the motion thing. Is there a mover? Mrs. Iacono? Do you have, do you...
Oh, 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 with the recommendation, sorry.
Could you read the motion and include your percentage?
That would be helpful, huh?
Thank you.
That the Board of Education approve a salary adjustment for non-bargaining employees in the amount of 3%.
Is there a second? Uh, seconded by Mrs. Dow. A discussion by members of the board? It's Iacono, and then Mrs. Dow.
I would just like to go through a couple of things as we discuss this, and the reason why I put 3% out there to open up discussion is because this is what was budgeted for. This is what is in the budget. This is something that came forward to us in January, and we essentially approved it because we didn't cut it in January. This was something that came forward again at budget time, and when we had to go through line item by line item, this item was in our do-not-touch list at 3%. There was consideration of taking this down to 2%, and there was a, a sense of this board, I felt at the time, that this was something that we didn't want to do, and that's why it went into the do-not-touch pile. This is a group that, a large portion of them have worked on the UNIS project over the past year, and have put in a lot of overtime. They also are not getting any type of bonus this year. They are non-union employees, and just for the record, the teachers with their general wage increase and increment increase will be getting 5.02%. Administrators, 4.07%. Secretaries, 4.57%. Custodians, 4.79%. And paraprofessionals, 3.12%. So based on that, these people would be receiving the lowest percentage increase based on, you know, a general wage increase and an increment increase. Now, I certainly am opening to entertaining ideas to hear what the board wants to do, and if you want to take it lower, that's certainly the purview of the board, but I just want it out there that we will not be saving taxpayers any money by lowering this percentage. We can, and if the board so chooses, lower the percentage... We can, and if the board so chooses, lower the percentage and then use the leftover funds to put in a line item somewhere else for use within the district, but this will have no impact on our tax pocketbook. So with that, I leave it open for board discussion.
I see Mrs. Zahn and Mr. Matola, and then Mrs. Dow. Mrs. Dow, you'll go first.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Ayakono basically touched on what I wanted to say. I did just want the public to know that, yes, this is something that already is in the budget. We're not adding money, that it's already been voted on by all the other boards in town. The mill rate's been set, so it's not going to come back now that we're looking for more money. Also, that, you know, this is really the only group now, whether some of our other new unions, the special ed trainers, the IT people, I think these are the only people left who are non-unionized, and so as long as we have the money there, we shouldn't be penalizing them for not unionizing.
Mrs. Zahn, and then Mr. Matola.
Thank you. Mrs. Ayakono, can you just give us the total for that 3% for that whole group, please?
Sure, I believe it is $44,000.
That's why I wanted to record, thank you. But is that, is that correct?
Yes. And I believe if we were to knock it down to 2.5%, we'd be saving $7,000, and if we do not get down to 2%, we'll save $14,000.
That was my point, that's why I wouldn't recommend, I believe it as the motion states. Right, so, thank you.
And then Mr. Matola.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, and known for the record that the contract increases that were just read out by Mrs. Ayakono were locked into those pursuant to contracts we negotiated two, three years ago, so for the most part. So it, it's really a drop in the bucket, about 3%, $44,000. So I'm inclined to support it.
Mr. Weber.
Yeah, I just, I'll support it because of the, just the gross amount of money that, $44,000 compared to $37,000. I don't think it's significant at all. I would just add, though, that, you know, those contracts that were cited just a moment ago were negotiated in a completely different environment, and secondly, that just because we budgeted for something doesn't mean it has to come true. You know, in the future, those contracts that were read out to us, I really don't believe they're going to be seeing those types of increases when they're renegotiated. So I'm not sure that I would vote for this item based on, you know, the reasons and the stuff increases that other employees or other unionized employees will receive, but just based on the, you know, $7,000 difference between 2.5 and 3, I would support this.
Further comments from members of the board? Seeing none, I guess I will conclude. I am on the committee with Mrs. Ayakono, and I moved it forward as the board, as the committee recommended at 3% with trepidation, because, I understand that the budget was built with this number in it, but to continue on what Mr. Weber just said, when something is in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to spend it, and the economic times that we are in right now are unprecedented. The contracts that have been cited were contracts negotiated three years ago in different times, and I would support a smaller increase, and we're not talking about a large sum of money, but we have many people in this community who are on the unemployment line right now, and they're not talking about a zero wage increase, they don't have a job. And I know many people in private industry who, their employers have told them that they are not getting wage increases, and they're not walking at that because they're happy to be employed. And so, these are the times we are in right now, they are unprecedented times. I would support a smaller increase, and I may be the lone dissenting vote here because I'm not comfortable, I've heard very clearly from the fiscal side of town government, and so I see no one else interested in offering a motion for a smaller increase. So if there is none, I will let the vote go forward. Mrs. Ayakono.
I'd just like to follow up on that and say that I completely agree with you. I understand these are extremely difficult times, and as I said, we're not going to achieve any taxpayer savings by doing this, and if I can finish, please. And I really think that as an employer, that this would be a best practice for our employees, and I'm prepared to state for myself on the record that going forward for the budget for the 2010, 2011 year, I am not willing to do anything more than 0%. But for this past year, I do think that this is the right thing to do, and going forward, like it or not, that's where I stand, I'm at 0 for going forward.
That's fine. It's not a question of whether or not, in my opinion, this saves tax dollars. I just know that this year, we had signs on supply closet doors in school buildings that there were no supplies left, and if there is place to save a few dollars and redirect it to students where we will need it in these times, I might consider that. But I don't need to belabor the discussion. If the board is prepared, before we do vote, I will open this to the public. If there are any members of the public that wish to address this item and this item only, before we vote, please come forward to the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, the motion reads, Mrs. Ayakono, that... Just to restate the motion?
Yes, that the Board of Education approve a salary adjustment for non-bargaining unit employees in the amount of 3%.
Thank you. And all members in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye, show of hands? And those opposed? Voting in favor are Mrs. Ayakono, Mr. Weber, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Dow. Voting in opposition, Mrs. Kupchak and Mrs. Alvin. Moving on to the next item, we have approval of the contractual agreements for central office administrators. I have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve contractual agreements for central office administrators, moved by Mr. Matola and seconded by Mrs. Zahn. And I would ask, do we have the contract available? Do we need to go over the terms of the contract? I would look at Mrs. Fitzgerald.
I guess really depending on what the board decides tonight, then we would issue the, have the specific individual contracts issued? They're not available tonight.
In our discussions, the central office administrators had agreed to a wage freeze going into the next fiscal year that we are now in, and the only other change in the contract was that the $2,000 fuel allowance in their contract was going to revert to mileage per the IRS rate. And I would just ask board members to confirm that that's everything that we had discussed. Are there, Mrs. Zahn?
Yes, and I did just want to thank central office administrators for this.
Thank you. Are there other, any other comments, other than, I think we all would agree with Mrs. Zahn that we do thank the central office administrators for coming to us, first of all, as we went through the budget process and offering to freeze their salaries. They offered it to us, and we appreciate that. It did help us a great deal in a very difficult budget year, and they agreed to the other terms in the contract as well. Mrs. Kupchak?
I'd also like to echo that statement. There's a lot of, during the budget discussions, and at the Board of Finance and RTM level, and in the papers, a lot of sort of negative comments that administrators are not, you know, doing their share, or they're getting paid too much, or they're not helping the town out, and I just want to echo that as well, that it appeared to me that many people didn't realize, and the administrators have, maybe they hadn't, maybe it was because they didn't do it with a lot of fanfare, but they did help the town out and help the community out by doing that, so I thank you as well, and it'd be nice if the town could...
Seeing by members present, I will go on. Our next item is reported textbooks reviewed in accordance with the administration's selection process, which will be recommended for adoption at the June 25, 2009 education business meeting. I would ask, the superintendent has asked if it would be possible if we could vote on this this evening, so they would be able to purchase the textbooks in time for the starting school. I would need a motion and a two-thirds vote from the board to add it. Mrs. Ayakono.
I, of course, just as such point of clarification, you said June 2009, you meant August 2009?
I apologize.
I, so you need a motion that we, I recommend that we adopt the administrative selection process, to recommend adoption of textbooks at the August 4 special meeting of the Board of Education.
I think we need the language, we need language to put it on the agenda tonight.
Oh, it's not on, okay. I'll let Mrs. Zahn help you with that.
Mrs. Zahn, would you like to...
I just...
As the secretary, write the language.
Yeah, make the motion that we add item D under section 5 of the business as a voting item.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Ayakono, and there's no, Mr. Weber, do you want to discuss?
I just, you know, there's a reason why first we get the textbooks for adoption and then vote on them later meeting. Mr. Boyle, maybe you could, you know, you have historical knowledge of why we do it that way in the first place. I mean, are we violating some policy that we have by doing this?
But I think where the concept behind it is to give the board the opportunity to review the textbooks.
Right, how often does that happen?
It happens every single time we have a textbook for adoption. I'm certain of that.
Almost every...
Almost.
I don't believe the selling textbooks is taking... Board members generally take the textbooks.
I think respectfully, though, Mr. Weber, you're actually correct. It does give the opportunity for the board to review the textbooks, and it is not in keeping with our current policy. However, by adding this as a voting item, it does assist the administration in ordering the textbooks. I would also let you know that, you know, the textbooks have been reviewed by the department head, the building administration, the teachers, the curriculum folks, and...
Well, to me, you know, maybe I'm bringing up a bigger issue than, you know, just for tonight's discussion, but to have a Board of Education review textbooks, you know, it smacks, to me at least, of going back 50 years in our country's history, looking at, you know, what are we teaching kids? And trying to censor what the administration does, so, I mean, maybe the next board can look at this policy a little bit closer, because I certainly am not going to read textbooks to have the administrators cross things out because they're not good for kids. I mean, I think it's a...
I think historically, it's been one of the functions of the board, and I'm not sure that the state hasn't even addressed that in their statute that I've heard, Dr. Parker.
I do not believe they do, but it's something that we can check.
I do believe that there is a state statute, and it probably goes way, way back.
I would agree with that.
The item is, the item on the floor is to add the item as a voting item. Are we discussing whether or not we should add it as a voting item? I'd like to keep to the item on the floor at the time. Mrs. Ayakono, whether or not to add this as a voting item?
Yeah, well, it's based on what Mr. Weber said. Are these new texts, totally new textbooks? Because I thought some of them were...
We can, if the item is on the floor, we could then discuss the textbooks. So if there are no other questions on whether or not to add the item as a voting item before the board does vote, I would offer the public to speak to adding this item as a voting item. If anyone wants to speak to that, please come forward to the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, this does require a two-thirds vote to add this as a voting item. All in favor? It is unanimous. Now we will go to the motion, which is to adopt textbooks on enclosures 6, 7, and 8, and I will leave the motion on the floor, moved by Mrs. Kupchak, seconded by Mrs. Zahn. Mrs. Zahn, would you please read the motion for the record?
Well, certainly. That the Board of Education, oh, I need all the titles, I'm trying to take my... Board of Education, adopt lifespan development, ancient civilizations, and economics as stated in enclosure 6, 7, and 8 for purchase.
Seconded by Mrs. Kupchak, and I will open it to board members for questions of the administration if they have any on the textbooks. Mrs. Kupchak? Are we going to have you sometime?
Yes, I can review that order. But we will have it, I guess.
I just, you know, sometime, you know, here's, over the course of the year, the students, you know, they ran out of books, because, you know, rolling, whatever, and so, I know that's been an issue. And I have to agree with Mr. Weber, if, you know, being on this board for six years, proved a lot of facts. But I brought them home, and you know, I've kept them too long.
We appreciate that.
I'm glad I didn't get a library fine.
Did you get your report?
Your report, like, did you two graduate? They graduate without returning the textbooks.
You know, I don't know if it is a state statute, but it does seem sort of... Silly, because we're not going to say, "Don't get this textbook," because I think it's a lot of textbooks. It's never happened in history.
Mrs. Fitzgerald, you're correct, and I think we've had textbooks that have been thoroughly discussed by boards of education, and we've been asked to reconsider.
Really?
What's happened with the textbook?
Well, now you're really texting Mr. Weber. But in my tenure here, which is about 17 years now, I do recall boards questioning it. Mrs. Fitzgerald, you could probably...
I have to see if I remember. I got some stretch, Mr. Boyle, I can't name the textbook. I think sometimes there have been discussions about level of rigor, lack of level of rigor in those kinds of areas. Less content, I think, than you were adding, less content, but just level of challenge.
Thank you. Mrs. Ayakono?
I don't have an issue with approving these tonight, but I would be, my recommendation that maybe this is something that could go to a policy committee from now on, if they could review it and come back with a recommendation. It might be that the public would like to weigh in on this.
All right, Mrs. Zahn.
Mrs. Zahn?
Well, again, I mean, it has to come back to the board anyway, I wouldn't bring this up to the policy. I mean, we can't make a decision if we're making the same recommendation and...
We'll take the state's, yeah. Mr. Boyle?
I mean, just in deference to Mrs. Zahn, I mean, we could bring up the policy of approval of textbooks at the policy committee, and check the state statute to make sure we're in keeping. We could check with CADE, make sure we're in keeping with the flavor of the law at least. And we also are having our policy book reviewed by CADE, probably toward the end of this calendar year or the beginning of next calendar year, and that will be one of the policies that we do.
I would note that in my 10 years of reviewing textbooks and approving them, I have found that the administration has always selected appropriate textbooks, and nothing that would ever embarrass the board, which is one concern. We have occasionally have questioned, as Mrs. Fitzgerald said, the rigor. I don't recall rejecting any in my tenure. I don't recall rejecting any in my ten years, but I've read quite a few, I found some of them to be very interesting, and I've found that board members tend to take textbooks out that might be a subject area that they are especially interested in, and you need to return all the textbooks, Mrs. Kupchak, or we will not let you retire. So, I, I am comfortable with approving these textbooks this evening, because I have faith that the administration has presented us with these textbooks throughout the years. Are there, if there are no other questions or comments from members of the board before we vote on the item, are there any members of the public that wish to address this item and this item only? Seeing none, are board members, those voting in favor of the motion, signify by raising their hands? The item passes unanimously, thank you very much. And moving on, we have reports and recommendations, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Clark.
I would appreciate your feedback in terms of this part of the agenda. Dr. Rizado and the other central office of realtors are working on getting a more comprehensive report and a strategic plan that we will send to you hopefully by the end of August. You know that Fairfield Rondo High School and the interim host master, master is here tonight, and I know that he's already well immersed in the NIAS recommendations for Rondo, Mr. Cohen and everyone at board is getting ready for the visit in October, and you know that Mrs. Katia Leonard is working very hard on a plan to address racial imbalance. Do you want this to be to continue as agenda items once a month? Do you just want written feedback? And the changes in staff report we also give to, and I'm wondering if we could just leave that by sending it to you?
I don't know that we need to discuss that this evening, but board members, if you could get back to Dr. Clark on these questions, though. Mrs. Kupchak?
Just to clarify, are you suggesting that if we get just written updates on the plan to improve racial balance, then the.
Well, that perhaps these could be placeholders, and if there were significant issues to be reported to you, or addressed, or where we needed your input, we would discuss it. But otherwise, I would just say, you received an update, you got the change of staff report in your package. Right, Rob, sometimes there really isn't a lot to discuss, and I just want to make sure that's okay with you, that we would just use it as a placeholder, but I would just say, "No report." No update, okay?
Okay. That's it for you. No report. That was my next question. Mr. Weber?
On the plan to improve racial imbalance, I looked at the numbers, and they are coming down at McKinley, correct? Do you know exactly what the percentage is?
For.
This couple of years at McKinley.
I mean, as of October 1st?
Yeah.
I don't have the number in front of me, but they have dropped, and they're very close to, as I recall, they're very close to moving into the 25% or impending racial balance. Very close.
But the pending doesn't get us out of.
No, it does not. No, it does not. But it is close. Again, we won't know until October 1st, 2009, and then, as reported by the state, April 2010, where we are for next. So, again, we can give you an idea, as we try to do each October, where we see ourselves, but the state, using their formulas, is different than what we do.
Oh, no.
Gives you an idea.
What's their, right now, where are they in terms of enforcing? The plan is still in effect, and they're monitoring.
Provide updates.
Okay, great. So, come back and sit. Is that moving quickly enough? Great, thank you.
Mrs. Kupchak?
Just for clarification, Mrs. Katia Leonard, the, and I know I've read this in our summer packets, but we sent out, we expanded the.
We included Osborne Hill for the add of district into McKinley?
Right.
Opt out? Correct. We had one family take us up on that, from Osborne Hill to McKinley.
Right.
And I don't, I can provide you with an update on the totals for each school that are going into and out of McKinley, because actually, we're receiving applications through this week. We're still receiving a couple.
And I was just going to ask you that.
Stream in, not a lot.
When was the, when was the deadline again?
Well, the official deadline was back in June.
Right.
But because we have space.
Right.
And we're not overcrowded in the K-1, 2, 4th and 5th grade at McKinley, we're leaving that door open with the superintendent's approval. So, we've just received another application this week, so I can get you an update as to those numbers. They're not significant, but it is more than last year, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, I was really encouraged when you sent the information out to us a couple weeks ago.
It was very promising, the number of requests to go into McKinley this year, we're very happy with it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zahn?
On this item? Yes, thank you. And just to clarify as well, even if we fall below the 25%, we're still obligated.
That's correct. We're moving forward with our plan.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have the changes in staff report in our, in our packets. Moving on to board reports, the first one is Mrs. Dow.
I have Mrs. Brand.
Oh, I apologize. The secretary of Mrs. Brand's report to read into the record.
Thank you. Board of Health report, there's no meeting in July, next meeting's in August. Fairfield Woods, you know, school building committee, very thorough report in our packet, we put the support online. Also, funding request, hopefully starting in August, will go to Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, and RTM. The money pays for just phase one, part one, and two, which included defined by building committee documents. Any funds not used will be returned to the town and put towards projects per approval of town bodies. And then she goes on to talk about phase one feasibility study and phase one part two, which is the conceptual schematic design, and the reason why we have the update on the minutes is because she said also amendments minutes of June 16th, the last sentence to read, Mrs. Katia Leonard stated that Plan Six, Improve Utilization, was the prior question. Thank you.
Okay, on that, Mr. Weber?
I'm coming on that. You know, I just hope this doesn't become about having a Board of Education, the board members cannot be present to start reading things into the record. I mean, if it's, first of all, a voting item, like changing the minutes, or voting on approval of policy, I think it violates public policy for members to have their thoughts read into the record. I mean, basically, this is a public forum, the public is here, we're obligated to do this, to deliberate in public so that they know what's going on, they have cameras here, and this is where we do our business. If a member is not present, that's fine. They should not have the ability then to start reading things into our record. For this, reports of members of the Board of Education, I suppose it's just a report, but certainly what they can do is circulate their comments beforehand, and so we could all have them. I just don't want the board falling into the habit of reading comments into the record, especially, and I would object at this word, moving on to a motion or discussion on A.R. or A.F. funds or anything else. I think it violates public policy for members not to say things in public, so that the public understands their position on things, and the public has an opportunity to respond to it. Thank you.
Mrs. Zahn?
Well, and I guess, I mean, I could care less what this board decides about that, but with all due respect, if this meeting was scheduled for last week, Mrs. Brand would have been here if the meeting was held last week, so I don't have a problem with leaning of this into the record.
On that point, Mrs. Kupchak?
I think what Mr. Weber was saying, and not just because of this situation, but I know in the past, even before I got on the board, when there was contentious issues, and board members couldn't be present, they wanted things read, you know, statements read, and things of that nature, and I recall in the past, that wasn't allowed. So, I, I mean, I think I do understand what he's saying, essentially, if you wanted to have something, for instance, a report on a committee that you are part of, you could always send it to have it be in the packet, and then you could read it over the weekend, or you can send an email out, just so it's for the public record. But I think it sort of is a sort of slippery slope, because then we kind of maybe get to the point where I want to, you know, weigh in, and I'm not here, or I want to vote when I'm not here, you know? So, I mean, maybe it's not for this particular issue, but just sort of, you know, a policy issue, or a guideline you might follow in the future.
I would, Mrs. Iacono, on the same point?
Yeah, I guess the only thing, I don't have an issue with a report being read. In fact, I'd rather have the report read into the record than circulated on email just between us, that would be a blatant violation. And we get letters from members of the public who can't attend and ask for their letter to be read into the record, so I don't see why having a board member's report read into the record would be an issue. Certainly, a voting item or something like that, I agree, would be controversial, but in terms of a report, and just having it read into the record, it's a statement, so I don't have a problem with that. And again, we do it in public.
We do it in public.
Mr. Weber, did you want the floor?
Yes. I mean, if we had sent that statement, copied it, and sent it out, put it in the back table, that's fine, the public hasn't seen it. And Mrs. Zahn, with all due respect, you were just summarizing what we're saying. So, I do have, you know, an objection, it is a slippery slope. You know, you can't make a meeting, you can't make a meeting, you try as hard as you can, but you just can't be here, and I think it's, it violates the policy of the state to have open meetings. Why do we have open meetings? Because the public is here, the public can examine what we're doing, and hold us accountable to it.
Moving on, Mrs. Dow, do you have your report?
As chairperson, Mrs. Dow, the policy report, and Septa did not have a meeting this month at, for summer, they're on vacation, as well as the rest of us.
Thank you. Thank you. You have a comment?
As you know, the Finance Budget and Community Relations Committee met, and the other two items that we discussed that have been discussed prior are the Strategic Plan Committee on Communications is working diligently on our board website, and they've asked for a liaison from the board to help facilitate that, and I volunteered up myself from the Finance Committee to help work as the liaison between that committee and this board, and will report back to you what they're looking at, get your feedback on what you'd like for the website. And they've also asked if someone from the Policy Committee is interested in joining them as well. We could even trade off if policy is interested, however we want to work. So, I just asked the chairman, Mrs. Zahn, if you would consider appointing somebody from your company to be a liaison with them as well. And then the other, only other item that we discussed in subcommittee was a brief discussion on whether or not we want to use the same law firms to represent both the, both the Board of Education and administration, and we really decided that this was something that warranted full board discussion, and we recommended that we take this item up possibly in our September meeting, if there's room on the agenda to discuss it more. And then, Sept doesn't meet in the summer, the Special Projects Standing Building Committee has been meeting, and the annexed projects are moving along nicely. I actually had an opportunity to look at the Sherman Annex, and was pleasantly surprised. It looks, it looks really great. The Sherman will be hosting an open house on September 2nd at 3:00 PM, and all, everyone is invited to come and tour the building. The Special Projects Standing Building Committee will be there, and we are working on getting a date for an Osborne Hill open house as well, to look at their annexed building. Unfortunately, financially, we've run into some trouble over the, with the Osborne Hill project. We're $40,000 in the hole, and the transportation project has been frozen, and it looks like we're probably going to have to take the money that's been out, the money that we've frozen for transportation, and apply that to Osborne Hill. So, the transportation right now has a portable and no inside, there's nothing done on the inside, and they don't have the railings up on the outside, but they were able to do some of the work outside. If we take the money from transportation and apply it to Osborne Hill, then we're $23,000 in the hole over on that project. So, the committee directed the chairman to discuss funding options with the First Selectmen, and that's where we left things. We'll be meeting again at the end of August. The Sherman project is, is okay. I think they have $156,000 over there that we haven't allocated yet, so that's obviously a concern to all of us. There have been questions surrounding smart boards, we actually don't have the money right now. Our biggest concern, obviously, is finishing the actual construction project. The smart boards are in the head specs, so I anticipate that we'll probably have to come back and ask for an amendment on that, because we probably won't have the funding to put that forward. So, that's something that you guys probably need to keep in the back of your heads, and how we're going to address that.
Thank you for that report. Dr. Clark, could I ask, on behalf of the board, that you, from the school district, would communicate with the First Selectmen regarding Osborne Hill, and get back to the board at the first, you know, your first available opportunity with information regarding Osborne Hill and funding? And if there is, am I hearing you, Mrs. Iacono, correctly, that there is still money in the Sherman budget?
There is, but these are two separate bonded projects.
Yes, I understand.
You can't just change over the money.
Right, and, but if you can get an update and have a discussion, and perhaps, you can send it to the First Selectmen.
Mr. Boyle has an opportunity to spend some time with the First Selectmen on Friday, and so he and I will address this.
I do know that Mr. Cullen has had some very candid conversations with the First Selectmen, and I know that Mrs. McWayne and Mr. Cullen had a conversation with the First Selectmen, I believe, on this past Thursday, and they were trying to find alternative sources within the town to fund some of these items, at least to complete all the projects. The issue with the smart boards at Osborne Hill is still on the table, that, that's not something that right now is being addressed, but I do know some of the other projects, the First Selectmen is looking at alternative funding sources within the town, because obviously our budget is so tight, we can't even consider. But the First Selectmen thought that, taking a look at some of the other funding sources that he may have available, he may be able to help.
So, we will get that information and get back to the board with information as soon as possible on that project. Mr. Maton?
Just quickly, what does $40,000 in the hole mean with respect to the project? I mean, what?
It really has more of an impact on what's happening at transportation. The, the way that it was explained at the meeting, basically what happened, there was an error with accounting and electrical work, I believe, and so it wasn't accounted for. Now it's come up, and so basically, everything is paid for. It's that we're now in a deficit situation, but we had already frozen accounts for transportation, so we can take the money. My understanding is, and if anybody knows differently, correct me if I'm wrong, that we will be able to barely finish the project, we have no contingency. We might end up being in the hole a little bit more, a minimal amount, and we will, the discussion was that we would possibly have to go back to the Board of Selectmen for more funding, but that the real project that was in serious jeopardy of not getting finished was transportation, because that's where the money was going to come from, to finish the Osborne Hill project. And whether or not we end up something in the hole after the fact on Osborne Hill wasn't really clear.
Mr. Boyle, would you like to add?
Just to pick up on Mrs. Iacono's comment, I believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I mean, I'm on the peripheral of this, so, the Osborne Hill and transportation projects are one project, they're considered one project. They're considered one project. The Sherman project is considered one project. So although there may be some money left in the Sherman project, it cannot be automatically transferred to the Osborne Hill project unless there is a motion by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM to make that kind of a transfer. Because these are town, non-recurring projects. They're not Board of Ed projects. So the Board of Ed really has no oversight. This is really a town project. It's up to the Building Committee to request from the Board of Selectmen, who then will go through the funding agencies up in town to get that through.
And they needed to check with their bond attorney if that could even happen. So it's a lot more complex.
Mrs. Matoule, were you finished?
Mrs. Kupchak and then Mr. Weber, does the Special Projects Committee's plan on asking? I mean, they're the building committee, right? I mean, because, I mean, only because there's no transportation facility, what are they going to do?
Well, there is a transportation facility. It's just falling apart drastically.
I thought they took it away, though.
No, it's still there. I did ask that question.
Oh, I thought that was.
Because I asked all their contingency plans, but they didn't take it, they haven't taken it away. Everything has been frozen. We ran such a low contingency on Osborne Hill that we started to get nervous about funding and froze Transportation in the likelihood that something like this could happen. We've had to blast over there. We've had to spend a little bit more money on, you know, getting the rock out and that kind of stuff. So.
So it's a simple matter of just trying to have the Board of Selectmen take any leftover funds out of Sherman and send it out.
There was, there were legal questions around that, whether or not that, it's really not that simple. It's a matter of Paul Hiller dealing with the bond attorney, the First Selectmen deciding if that's something that they wanted to pursue. The direction that the committee gave the chairman was to speak with the First Selectmen on how he wanted to proceed, knowing that this was going to probably end up in a shortfall.
Mr. Boyle, do you want to add?
Just in subsequent to that, Mr. Cullen and Mrs. McWayne had a conversation with the First Selectmen. And I believe Mr. Hiller was involved in the conversation as well to see whatever they could do to expedite the funding request, whether it's an internal transfer within the town. There are funding sources, or if they have to go back to the Board of Finance.
Mrs. Dawn, did you have, Mr. Weber and then Mrs. Dawn?
No, I remember the Tomlinson project, that we transferred money, I think, from one of the other projects. Or the Tomlinson was through, and couldn't do that without the approval of the town bodies. So, yeah, we'd have to go through a process. I guess the money, well, there's an accounting error, let's keep it out. And we'll just have to see what goes.
Mr. Boyle?
The only thing I would add to, it's just off the funding topic, but if you have an opportunity, you can be for September to see the facilities. They are phenomenal in terms of both building projects have turned out very well. And I wish Tom Cullen were here tonight, just to credit him with the idea. The steel fabricated modular construction really are a good, solid way to go, especially when you're in a time crunch. They really have worked out well.
I've communicated with Mr. Cullen about setting up for board members a time, if we can find one time. If not, perhaps a couple different times before school opens for board members to go tour the two projects. And he will be getting something out to all of us on that. Mrs. Dawn?
Thank you again for the small project standing building committee. It's good to know that it's not Board Ed because I have toured that Osborne Hill facility on a number of occasions because it's in my backyard. The site's a mess. It's dangerous. And, you know, we talked about $6,000 for fencing rooms, not to get up on a roof. You were able to walk through Osborne Hill, open a classroom door, an outside door that faces the annex, and fall right into a six-foot trench. No, it's not secure. I mean, I was able to walk into the site at night, children on the playground. It was, it was not, I mean, the building looks, you know, beautiful, but the surrounding areas and everything, that's, no, it's not good. And there's, I guess, the electrical conduit also that's outside the building. Not that I need to give any big ideas, but you want to talk about being able to climb up onto a roof because of how far out it comes from the building. That's a definite problem. And this is somebody who's not trained in construction, who can just, you know, look around and see what the issues are. So I would definitely address those.
No, I will pass that feedback back to the committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any further reports, Mrs. DiConne?
No, we had similar issues with the Riverfield portable deliveries. So thank you for giving us that feedback. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Kupchak reports.
I think we're going to talk about facilities during open board discussion. And there wasn't anything education related at our Parkinworth meeting. However, we got to have our meeting on the beach. We do that once every summer, and it was very nice.
Mr. Matoule?
Fairfield School Building Committee, they're doing a thing over there. The big issue over the last week is that they removed the oil tank and they found that there was some leakage. An email I got from Al Kelly was, they're not sure how much remediation they're going to have to do. At least they took, so, and I haven't heard anything. Their next meeting is Tuesday.
Mr. Weber?
Actually, we discussed already through the curriculum call to special programs. We discussed it our last couple of meetings. There's no other report.
Okay, Mrs. Dawn?
Thank you. The only thing I want to add to curriculum policies and special programs, besides spending it on one or two policies that we just approved tonight, was the drug alcohol program. We did meet with both headmasters, interim and other ones. We met with guidance and athletic directors. I guess there's also a side group that is looking to make something mandatory in our school system with, in regards to alcohol, which is something that this board needs to discuss. I mean, obviously, we're not, as many mandatory programs happen, you know, throughout site PTAs or whatever without board approval. So that will be coming to you. I know Dr. Resado was going to check with some other schools and the athletic directors to see if that's going to be implemented in program. We had a big discussion about that. So just know that that is coming. The Scholarship Foundation, both evenings on awards night, where, well, I was at Lovelos, I heard awards went just as well. And, you know, we appreciate the community support and the schools and PTAs as well in scholarships. We do, I mean, that's one thing, the Scholarship Foundation, they're all does a wonderful job in that. And you can do.
I would just add to Mrs. Dawn's comments on the alcohol abuse. I had attended last month with Dr. Clark, the task force that is headed up by the First Selectmen. And there are members on that task force from the community, from representative, from school PTA, from police department, and from the two universities in Fairfield. And, correct me, is there anyone that I've missed, Dr. Clark? And I had attempted to represent the board at that meeting. There has been no official member from the board designated to attend. I will continue to attend those meetings unless somebody expressed an interest in going. I know you're all pretty big with assignments, but I will continue. And I do believe that that is something that is being done on the town size, trying to involve the full community. And there are things that Mrs. Dawn has talked about and she mentioned that are also happening, I believe, from our PTAs. And at some point, I would think it would be appropriate for the Policy Committee to talk with them as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And moving on, we finished the reports, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes. And audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member or members of the board. Decorum will be enforced, and citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. If there are members of the public, and I see if they would line up behind the first speaker, please. And as you start stating your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Rich Johnson, I'm a carer, driving Southport. Just want to thank the Curriculum Select Committee for taking public comment on all the seclusion restraints. I appreciate it very much. I think it's important that the Board of Education be actively involved in approving federal grant money. For some mysterious reason, there's been a past practice of not having any public discussion among board vote on federal grants. I think it's important that this board be aware that, I think that they're not doing their full responsibilities of overseeing of the children's interests. I think it's important that budget book with final numbers be published at the facts once it's all been done. I think it's important people see where all the dust has settled. Third thing is, in the last Finance Subcommittee meeting, there was discussion of the use of the stimulus funds, the SFSF. I think it was implicitly said that restoring the five, the teacher level entry school and the 10.25 was tantamount to restoring the class guidelines. So hopefully there's some clarification that the grade three through five is going to be 25 next year, not 26. Right now, I'm uncertain. The last point would be is, if you look at the IDA grant, you'll see $500,000 going towards normal education costs, especially like kids. I postulate that that's probably next year's ECS as well as the year after's ECS, the 90%. So clearly, there's $500,000, the grant can be used towards the regular Board of Ed budget. So that's not going to go towards special ed kids. It frees up the budget somewhere else. Importantly, we heard tonight, something very important, we heard that the IDA grants are going to go to teach all kids and all teachers. The IDA grant is supposed to go, except for 15% that you elect to use.
Mr. Johnson, time, I note that our timekeeper sitting off to your right, they will raise the sign when the time is up.
Good evening, Betty in O'Shaughnessy, Queens Grant Road. I'd like to address communication with the public. One item was Dr. Clark, you asked if the board, if your reports would just be a written report to the board. And Mr. Weber questioned having a non-voting report from a board member who can't be present, written, read into the record. As a member of the public, we want this information. And if it's not here at this meeting, it's unlikely we're going to get it. So it's important that government is transparent as much as possible and that we get the information. So I prefer, as a member of the public, that it be here at this table. I also, what you could do if you do decide to do written reports is make sure that the PTA gets those reports so they can be dispersed through the e-flashes. In the same vein, would you please notify the public about, and via PTA again, about the status of the Ludlow Headmaster search? Because we haven't heard anything on that recently. And also, if you could give the public through, again, through the PTA, the written procedures for selecting a new superintendent and headmaster. Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte Leslie, 160 Hunter Road. I wanted to say how very sorry I am, Dr. Clark, that you are retiring and to thank you for the last eight years. I look forward to working with you this coming year. On that note, I had sent you all an email asking that we have a parent rep on the search committee. You'll be hard to replace, but it has to be done. We do have a history of being on the search committee. We were on Dr. Clark's search committee. Parents are on building committees, task forces. I too would like to see the criteria in writing. So please, I would like you to have a parent on this next committee. I want to also thank you for keeping within the class guidelines, for restoring the .25 certified staff with the understanding that we'll be evaluating it again. I look forward to hearing when the class sizes will be come August 17th. And I also want to reiterate what Mrs. O'Shaughnessy has said. I always enjoy your reports at PTA Council. I think people here really do need to hear your reports. And I also agree that if, you know, a member's absent, a report or even a change in the minutes is important to hear. So thank you very much.
Hi, Josh Alwyn, 2457 Burr Street. Two points, very quick. First, I hope that we, when we spend money, we can know why we're spending it. Just because the money's in a budget and it's available to spend for the non-bargaining unit employees, I hope we can explain why we're spending it. Just because it's there and we can spend it doesn't mean that we should just spend it. This is, you know, we're in tough economic times. And part of the problem is because people spend money just because it's there. Let's spend things because we need you. I, you know, I know a lot, I know a lot, I just came through the school system four years ago. I know a lot of these people, and I think it's good money spent. But this is an open forum, like it's been said by Mr. Weber earlier. Let's explain to the public why we're spending this money, why we're spending 3%, not 2.5, not 2. Let's make that clear. I don't want to criticize, though, this is a night that we should be thanking Dr. Clark. I came through her school system. I think it's a very hard thing to do to run the school system this size. To say that anyone could do it perfectly would be a lie because it's too big. But if you could do it as close to perfect, it's what Dr. Clark did. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, I will move on to open board discussion. And I will start, I have a few things that I need to cover before we get to some of the other items. Having heard some of the comments from the public, I would just note that any information that is sent to the board is subject to FOI, number one, and it's always available to the public. And any reports that would be sent to the board that wouldn't be read here at a board table would be available on the website. So they would be available to the public. And addressing Dr. Clark at this time, which I waited till this point. Dr. Clark has submitted her intentions to the board last week to retire on June 30th, 2010, which is the end of this coming school year. And when she called me last week, we had talked before and I thought maybe I'd convinced her to stay. She has, I think, some plans, perhaps, and maybe for shorter days because this job is a job that is not a nine-to-five job. Any administrator knows how long they work. And Dr. Clark, as all administrators, works many hours beyond a normal workday. And so I've worked with Dr. Clark. And I remember, I've worked with her since she's been here. Mrs. Dawn and I both had the privilege of being on the board at the time when we hired her. And I remember the first day I met her in the lobby of Fairfield Ludlow High School, now what was Roger Ludlow Middle School. Standing with Mrs. Dawn, we were waiting for her first interview. And so it has really been a very good experience to work with you this once a time. And I remember that first interview vividly. I remember the second interview and everything following that. It has, it has been a very good experience. It is hard when somebody decides that they're going to leave because we have been very pleased and we've been very comfortable. But I have to respect your decision to not work quite as many hours. But I have to respect your decision to not work quite as many hours. And when I say that, you can see the smile on her face. So, and I'd also like to explain before other Board members might want to offer some of their comments to Dr. Clark before we move on. I'd like to explain for the Board's benefit and for the public, the process that was taken when Dr. Clark was hired and those searches were conducted. In 2001, 2001, the year you were elected to the Board, Mrs. Zahn, in February, Dr. Harrington, our superintendent at that time, had submitted her intentions to retire. And that was too late for this Board to hire a superintendent to start that July 1. So, the Board at that time hired an interim superintendent who served the district for a year. That spring, the Board had appointed itself the search committee, which it has under the statutes the right to do. And it interviewed and hired a search firm. The search firm then conducted the focus groups, which involves all members of the community. It met with the Board to talk to the Board. The search firm met with administrators, teachers, other members of the district, employees in the district as focus groups, members of the school community, members of the public, and without asking Mrs. Dyer to go back and look for the records to see if there were more people. Those focus groups were conducted through the fall of 2001. And they continued after that work in developing, collecting resumes, doing their work of sorting through resumes and doing their initial interviews before the newly-elected Board, who would have the responsibility of hiring the superintendent, met any of the candidates. And the timeline that we had worked well. We had a search and we were successful in finding a candidate in the first search that was satisfactory to the Board. And our consultants went back out and conducted a second search. They didn't need to conduct more focus groups, they just needed to go through the process of interviewing, going through the resume phase and interviewing more candidates to bring back to the Board. At that point, the Board saw a group of candidates, Dr. Clark being one of them. And I was thinking about it earlier today when I was discussing with a Board member on the Board at the time we hired Dr. Clark, and we both concluded that had she been in the first group, we would have had one search. And, but we didn't find her until the second time. The second search included representation at the final interviews with the finalists that the Board had considered. And it included representation from the administration, from the building principals, from the teachers' union, and from PTA Council. And they sat in on that final interview with the finalist. And then, they, as a group, provided a summary of their impressions of those final candidates for the Board to consider when they deliberated. And so, that's the process that the Board used the last time when we hired Dr. Clark. And I've also spoken with Board members who along with Mrs. Zahn and I hired Dr. Clark in that process, also hired Dr. Harrington. And it was that same process, absent that time, the participation from the administrators, teachers' union, and that number of people I've mentioned. So, that is the process that was followed at this time, or in the past search. And moving forward, this Board will have an agenda item on August 25th at our meeting to appoint the Board as the search committee, which will allow, as the search committee, which will allow us to then meet in order to ask for, request for proposals, RFPs, from search firms in order for us to interview the search firms and then hire a search firm, which hopefully, we may be able to complete by mid-September. At that point, the search firm will take on the job of the search. The Board, at that point, waits for the search firm to do all those pieces that I've mentioned, the focus groups. The timeline would be similar in that they would get that work done and they wouldn't be actually looking at resumes and providing resumes for the sitting Board until the new Board is selected, is how that timeline would most likely work for them. That timeline would allow us, as I have checked with CAE, that would put us in very good standing to have, assuming we see a good pool of candidates, a superintendent hired to start work next July 1, thus avoiding any need to have to get an interim superintendent. So, we won't be doing, for the benefit, for the benefit of the public and the Board, we won't be acting on anything until this Board appoints itself, which we must do before we can do anything as the search committee. And we will have that as an agenda item on August 25th. It will be open for discussion and a Board vote. Hi, Sarah, this is Icahn, question, Mr. Weber following.
Just for a plain clarification, so we'll appoint ourselves as the search committee at the end of August, and then you would anticipate that at one of the meetings in September, we would approve the RFP as a Board?
We, after we appoint ourselves as the search committee, under FOI regulations, our meetings for the purpose of that search, because it is personnel, are not subject to FOI and are held as non-meetings. So, we would have, we would have meetings outside of our regular meetings to work on that RFP.
But we would do that as a Board?
As a Board, as the search committee.
And that falls under personnel, so it will be done in a closed-door meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and we anticipate holding the superintendent's evaluation on the August 25th meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I would also note for the public's and for the Board's benefit, confidentiality is paramount in personnel matters. And when you are hiring any member of personnel, they are paramount. I can't express how important confidentiality is when you are hiring a superintendent. They will not come to a district if they do not feel that they have confidentiality from the committee that they are working with. When superintendents decide to move, and Dr. Clark can confer, they need the confidentiality so that they aren't in an awkward situation in their existing district, if they're a sitting superintendent. If they happen to be, in an article I read recently, in the private sector, it's very different for them. But if they are a sitting superintendent or an administrator in a district elsewhere, confidentiality is paramount, which is why these meetings have to be held as they are held and why we're allowed to do it because they're personnel matter.
Thank you, but I just have two follow-ups to that. And to clarify then, the new Board will review any, they'll hold resumes essentially, and the new Board will review them when they-
Right, the sitting Board would only be working-
We're essentially setting everything up and getting the ball rolling.
That's absolutely right.
Very comfortable.
And it's necessary to do in order to meet the timeline.
Right, I understand. The only other thing that I would just ask personally is that you possibly follow up as Chairman with the PTA Council President to make sure that they're comfortable with this process and the fact that they've, you know, requested an opportunity to be a part of the process and make sure they're more about the focus.
I have spoken, I have spoken with the President, I will speak again. The ultimate responsibility for how the process runs in the statutes resides with the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Further questions? I just wanted to be able to present all that information. Mrs. Kupchan?
Just quickly, I'm glad you clarified regarding the consultant, because when I originally, I hadn't been part of this process in the past, so when I had first heard consultant, I just assumed that they would be reviewing resumes. And to hear now that they're setting up focus groups and doing all of that other work, I'm more comfortable with it because my original concern was funding. You know, why are we funding that? We can do that. But now I realize it's a much more in-depth process that requires a lot of interviews with the public and input from parents and teachers and community members, so I am more comfortable. Although I would like to know how much that was going to cost.
Small, I'll just tell you, the small districts don't always use consultants, but districts the size of Fairfield could not do a search and without consultants would not attract the kind of candidates that we need to hire. And I can speak to price, I don't know exact cost, but they, on the low end, I have some his, I have some reference on the low end that they, they start in the twenties, I would not want to say they end in the twenties. But the investment that we are making, we don't, we were very fortunate to have Dr. Clark here for what will be eight years. We don't want to have to be hiring superintendents every two or three years. And I, because Mrs. Zahn also has experience, and Mrs. Zahn came into the process as the new Board members, whoever are elected this fall, will come into the process. She was elected in November and she started with the interview. She was not part of the earlier process. So, Mrs. Zahn, if you want to offer any thoughts, that you do have that experience?
Sure. I was very pleased with the firm that the prior Board had picked and coming in as a new Board member. This is our most important task that we have as what the official-
Harold can speak to hiring teachers, hiring administrators, and the same is true for superintendents. But later you go in the school year trying to hire people, the fewer choices you have. And so, to have all that legwork done before you can see resumes, which is why we will need to be starting at the beginning of the school year, having a consultant do those focus groups, because that puts us at a timeline where if all were to go well, very optimistically, we would potentially, with a new Board, looking at resumes in December, maybe interviewing, maybe not in December, but certainly interviewing in January. And you do want to be trying to find your candidate in the first quarter of the year. Going into the second quarter, the chances of finding somebody become much slimmer than having to deal with interim superintendent, because some people leaving their districts have contract limitations that don't allow them to leave after the first quarter, as far as announcing to their Boards that they're leaving. So, and that is explaining why the timeline, we're lucky that we didn't hear about this in November, as far as the timeline is concerned. So, and if there are any other questions? We will, then have that as an agenda item to discuss and vote on appointing the Board as the search committee. Mrs. Kupchan?
Not this, I, or not now.
Oh, the next item? Yes, I'm just, I think that was all I had, and then we're getting to your long-range facilities, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, and make some personal comments about Dr. Clark.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I was, I've had obviously a lot of experience in this town in education issues and have known other superintendents. And I can say that I haven't had the best relationship with the past superintendents over the years. And I've had a very good relationship with Dr. Clark, even if we've disagreed in the past. I've always felt that she's been a good communicator and has listened to me as an elected official that wasn't on this Board and called her and maybe raised my voice a little bit here and there. And as a Board member, and I appreciate the hard work that she's put in, the initiatives that she's put forth, that I personally feel very proud of. You know, as an elected official, you have what I call hallmark moments in your career. And they are, they are moments that you've worked really hard for and good things have happened. And in my particular career, Dr. Clark has been part of the preschool program at McKinley that I feel is one of my hallmark moments, and I think it may be one of yours as well. And the co-op and pal, being able to be in a building that's an actual school was something that's always been important to me, someone who's interested in education, because I always felt that those students were not getting really what they deserved as Fairfield students. And I'm very proud of that, and I think that under your leadership, you were able to have that happen. And I appreciate all the hard work you've done. And I have enjoyed the easy communication and your ability to listen to others and have enough of mine. And we will wish you greatly, and I wish you the best of all.
Mr. Weber?
Now, you're going to start chain reaction here. Thank you, Dr. Clark, as a member for six years and a Chairman for one and a with you. We always worked very well together. And to add, you know, to Brenda, you know, you've always said in the six, seven, eight years that you've been here, that, you know, education for all of Fairfield's students was, you know, the most important thing. When I heard that, I said, that's exactly what I want to hear from a superintendent, that they think of all the kids all the time, you know, have a blind eye towards each of them and make sure that they receive the best education that we can pay for here in this town. And I think we've done that over the years, this being the toughest in terms of budget. But in the past years, you know, you fought for the budget really hard, and that's, I think, one of these superintendents' most important attributes as well. So, I thank you, and you'll hear more from us as the year winds down. I don't think you're going to see me after November at this meeting, but certainly, I'm sure we'll have events to go to and sing praises. One member of the public did ask about the status of the headmaster search at Fairfield Ludlow. If you could just go on this with some-
We, of course, are extremely pleased that Mr. Ebling agreed to be the interim headmaster at Fairfield Ludlow High School. And we believe that probably sometime in December, January, we would begin the search process again. And depending on how things go, I hope Mr. Ebling will consider applying to be the full-time person. There is no statement in Fairfield that if you're the interim, you cannot apply. Some districts do that, and I'd like to make it very clear that was not part of our agreement with Mr. Ebling. So, we will begin the process, I'd hate to say, probably beginning of December. You know, clearly, people will know that the search is on and we're looking for the best candidate, but we believe we also have some strong people right here.
Are you going to keep the same committee that you had for-
I don't know, that's something that we would have to talk- I don't know, that's something that we would have to talk about. Mrs. Fitzgerald and the other members of the committee, some may want to be on it, some may not. Some of the parents may no longer be involved with the PTA, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Mrs. Kupchak, did you want to talk about the facilities now?
I guess I just wanted to, you know, complete the discussion from earlier, didn't I? Speak out of turn, but, you know, as chairman of the facilities committee, I'm sort of in a holding pattern or feeling a bit, you know, people are asking and, you know, asking what's going on, and I really don't know what's going on. I'll check and find out. It's my, it was my understanding that we did the work, you know, we did the research, we had the parents there, and we went through everything with Mrs. Aykona, Zab, and Tom, crunching numbers and moving streets and, you know, all the fun stuff that goes along with that. So I think because we are getting close to the end of this board's term, wanted to get some feedback from the board. And obviously, you don't have to tonight, we don't have, we're missing two members. But some feedback in relation to, you know, looking over the data that we gave you in a more close way, and just sending myself as the chairman some of your thoughts. And, you know, maybe I like Plan Six, and however, I don't think this piece works, or I don't like the voluntary part, or I like the voluntary part, but I want it to turn into a mandatory part, or whatever it is. Or it could be that I like a lot of parts of all of the plans, however, I think we need to add some additions to certain schools before these things happen. Just something, whatever that is. Because I think, even if it has a timeline piece to it, I think what my, my fear is, is that the new board, you're going to have people who are cold and have no background, and then it's going to take them a while to get up to speed. And if you didn't want to do anything, and even like I said, if you wanted to say, "I want to do this, this, and that, but I want it to be implemented in 2011" because we want to see addition, or we want to see something happen that helps these pieces fall into place more easily, that might be a good idea. Because, you know, you're going to be involved with people needing to get up to speed, not understanding all the data, and then you have your superintendent search, and, you know, of course, all the regular school year act, all the stuff that goes on with the board. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Comment on that? We will, we will have an opportunity probably at one of our September meetings on this item.
I mean, just email feedback to me, and I, you know, or to me, Sue and John together, so that we could at least have some sense of where the board, I mean, there was a lot of comments that night. However, there wasn't any, like, concrete direction. And, and obviously, you know, the board doesn't want to take it up. You know, it's up to the board, if you want to say you want to wait, then that's fine as well. Just something. Because I think also the public is sort of hanging. And maybe, you know, they want to know, you know, are we doing anything at all?
I see three hands, I'll start with Mrs. Aykona and just move around the table.
Well, respectfully, I think we already had that discussion. We kind of went through it at length and didn't really reach a consensus on the elementary school part. And I felt like when I left the room, what the direction that we gave was, we wanted to settle up the issue with the middle school feeder system. And I left the room thinking that we would have something at the end of August, September the latest.
Just on the middle school?
On the middle school piece, that we can make, that this board would make a decision on. Because that's really, and I felt like we don't agree, and maybe I'm wrong, that that's an urgent and pressing issue, as these children are here. And we have no place to house them, so we need to move things around. So I thought that that was something that we would do with this board, was to get a look at that in August and to hopefully make a decision in early fall, so that that was put to bed. Regarding the elementary school piece, I agree that we really didn't reach a consensus on any of that, but we certainly did all offer our opinions. Personally, I don't think we should be doing it in email. We just heard from the public, they don't want us to do that, they want to hear from us. And I'll put it out there for myself, I want to see the October enrollment numbers. And at this particular juncture, I'm not comfortable doing anything until those numbers go through. And just looking at the timeline, I think it's going to be a matter that's going to have to be discussed if it's warranted by the next board. But, you know, again, the middle school piece, we know they're here, they're physically here. I don't see any reason why we're, you know, I mean, I mean, we essentially just need to approve something that administration recommends in terms of the students. And I don't really see the need to drive that out. If we're feeling differently, that's fine, but for all intents and purposes, I think it needs to be discussed out in the open, and I kind of think we already did that.
Mr. Tolan?
Yeah. My understanding is that we need to get some information from central administration, which they're working on right now, because, and that relates to the middle school concept, because theoretically, what they recommend could affect the elementary school redistricting, whatever you want to call it. So, so we need that information. And I think at this point, when we get that information, let's just put it on the agenda for a board meeting. And maybe the subcommittee could look at it first, but, and I'm not, I want to see the information before I decide whether or not it's going to be this board or the next board that's going to act on it. That's, and I think it's important to see the enrollment numbers too for October. So I think the information we're waiting for from central administration is going to dictate what we do, not only for the middle school, but possibly for the elementary schools. So I kind of agree, and I kind of agree with you, Brenda, where we are right now.
Mrs. Ahn?
Thank you, yeah, I want to echo also what Mrs. Aykona said. I thought we had most of that discussion two months ago whenever we were waiting for central administration. So I think we are in a holding pattern as of right now. Definitely at a public meeting, not the email. And, yeah, I mean, you know, I said what I wanted to say on redistricting two meetings ago. So I guess we'll wait and see, but everything needs to be done at a board meeting for the public.
I just, when we do this a lot, though, and I don't want the public to get the impression that we're doing things as they could, we send each other information and then talk about it in public. It happens all the time, and it wasn't as if there's some secret. You say, "I like Plan Six," and then we come back, and then we put all the data together and talk about it in public, and votes are taken in public. I mean, obviously, you have to meet every night to share that amount of information. So it's not as if I'm suggesting we do something not in public. I'm just saying that, like we do at our Friday packets, it's information. And all that information that you post, if you could look at it. All I'm suggesting is that, and just for a moment, I just want to just go back. I didn't have any preference about any of it. I got that people want to talk about the middle school. Again, the middle school will not be built if everything goes according to plan, and it may not, till 2011? Maybe longer? You know, I mean, so.
Plan is.
Right. It was my belief, you know, back in December when we started this whole thing, and my committee, you know, got thrown to deal with it for a long time, that everybody wanted this done right away. You know, they wanted all of these things in place, had to have it. And, you know, and so we did the work, and I understand, looking at the middle school piece, but they are interconnected. They have, there is, if you move kids here, or you move there, you make an elementary school more crowded where you can just base it solely on capacity levels and not look at any movement at all, and then just have the feeder pattern. But from what I, from what we learned at the committee level, the parents wanted a full, comprehensive plan. When we talked us doing elementary and not doing middle school, they were like, "We want to see it all." So to say, "We're just going to do middle school and not elementary," I'm not sure that the public's going to like it. They wanted to see the whole thing, you know? And then there was a lot of concern about the feeders to the high school and how those play out in socioeconomics and all of that. So I, you know, again, if the board wants to table it, you know, they want to get the information along with our October numbers, I don't have a horse in this race. Although the committee and the parents did a lot of work based on what people asked us to do. And I just hope that that work doesn't, you know, or it wasn't done in vain.
I will note that when we discussed this in June, it was evident through the board's work that evening that working at the K-5 level was demonstrating that if the board addressed the secondary level first, yes, Mrs. Kupchak is correct, that nothing's going to fit perfectly and neatly. But working on the secondary level first, which is very pressing, and we were all so concerned, but we now do have the building committee for Fairfield Woods. We are now obviously still waiting for a funding request to be approved there.
It could change.
And things, things could change. But it was evident from that meeting and the conclusion of that discussion in June was that the administration would look at the secondary level, and when they were done with that, which Mr. Boyle has noted it earlier in this meet, in this meeting, and report back to the board, we would have material to work with. It was also the conclusion, as it became evident from that discussion, that when we can identify the approach for the secondary piece, which is going to take us to the point when we will have October numbers and enrollment, we will have those numbers and we will have that piece, which may take us till October, it may take us till November. It's too hard right now to determine how quickly we will have that work done. And then when we have that, with the enrollment numbers, we will be able to look at the elementary piece. The elementary piece may or may not fit neatly into that secondary piece. But it did become very evident from the work, I believe that was June 9th or June 16th, and was the conclusion when we finished the discussion, that that was the best approach to take. And I see Mr. Boyle nodding yes to what I've just said. So that's where I see this going. When we have that information from the administration, be that probably in early to mid-September, we will be looking at this again. And I'd just like to note, so that people in the public don't get nervous. Mrs. Kupchak is not suggesting that board members violate FOI in communicating back and forth to each other. That is email that goes through the central office. And I just, information that is sent to an administrator, and then through the administrator disseminated to the rest of the board. I just, it is always available, I want people to know that. I think board members know that I do my absolute best to police email with this board. And so I'm continually reminding board members, I definitely try to do my best to be sure that everyone's complying properly with FOI. I just wanted to make sure people didn't misunderstand what you said. And Mrs. Ahn?
Thank you, and based upon this whole discussion just now, this is why redistricting will never happen in this town. Laugh all you want, you know, when we decided to scrap this redistricting plan on the table and we sent it to committee, we had a deadline. And that's what they'll say.
Mr. Boyle, and then I think I will take a new open board item, or I will close out the item.
I just wanted to clarify what we're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Well, because I.
I see you nodding your head, so.
I don't want any misunderstanding.
Thank you.
There's no misunderstanding.
It's our intent to provide a suggested feeder structure from the elementary schools through the middle school through the high school. I heard the board say they preferred not to split elementary schools through that process. We would also make a recommendation based on some projections, some preliminary projections, to the year 2011, so that you get a sense of what the middle schools would look like, the three middle schools in 2011, and then what the high schools could look like thereafter, based on our projections, not the demographer. Knowing full well that in October, October 1st figures will come in for enrollments, they will be re-admitted to our demographer, who will do new projections for probably mid-December, when we wind up getting them. So it's just a process to go through to annually update that. Is that what the board wishes us to do?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I understood that you were doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So are there any other items for open board discussion? Mrs. Ahn?
Thank you, and I told you about the bad, but I'll tell you about the good that I saw while I explored out the board now. The Boilers, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Were the Boilers, I didn't, haven't seen them sold, but I seen, I saw them taken out.
Yes, Asborn Hill.
Yes, are the Boilers in?
It's my understanding they are.
Okay, because, I mean, you know, when you see all these trucks in your backyard and everything.
I've been through.
I just walked over to see what was going on.
The hole through the door and.
Yeah, I know, I, well, that's, that's not a, that's a small building.
That's well, but the Boilers, yes. It's my understanding that they have been.
Yes, and also the kitchen renovation.
That's begun.
Okay, because when I was there two weeks ago, it took time.
And it's my understanding that that will be complete prior to the first day of school.
I'm sure it will, thank you.
Thank you. If there are, Mrs. Aykona?
I know with the mold remediation at Riverfield School, there are going to be recommendations coming forward from a cleaning company and they're going to be some activities over the summer. I was wondering if anybody has an update on that, or if possible, did they have an update on that?
They don't have an update on that, but we can give one for you.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further items for discussion, I will move on to our next item, and I will entertain the motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Ahn, expected by Mrs. Aykona, all in favor. We'll see everyone on the 25th of August. Enjoy the rest of summer.